Everybody, it's a special meeting for the Fayette County Commission. Today is 16th of June, starting earlier than usual because Commissioner Luisas and I have to go to an exciting new opening of a new business over in the Highco area. We are stoked. Game Well Engineering is opening officially. It's doing its ribbon cutting today, but it hopes to employ up to 40 people in the next year to two years in repairing mining equipment and rebuilding mining equipment, which is right up our alley.
Where is it?
In, what's the name of that old building? Golly, it's on Cross.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right across from the Montreal High School. Anyway, we're pretty stoked about it. Their principals are coming in from India and Australia, and so it's a big deal. They're going to be providing service all in North America. So that is 11. So with that said, try to get through here pretty quickly. Ruth, do you want to? So the first thing, and I'm hoping Anthony reviewed this. This is the, that's from Farmer, Klein and Campbell. It's ordered to appoint Sheriff Mike Fridley as administrator of the State of Trees. Did you review that?
I did.
Are you good with it?
Yes. Basically, I'm reading between the lines. I guess that's happening. Case that is potentially going to be filed, and there has to be administrator, detective or what have you, somebody has to represent the state in order to hire the attorneys. So that's, that's what it's all about, that Mike to be appointed so we can hire him to pursue the litigation. But yeah, it's statutory, so we can score with the sheriff.
All right, right. I just didn't know, I guess, given all these relatives here, I knew there had to be something going on.
But I'm assuming nobody, I'm assuming nobody has been working with the family, so that's why they are what they are. I'll make my own approval.
Second, all those in favor? Bye. For the Commissioner Brennan is ill. Is he on that? Yeah, he has an appointment this morning, so he was going to try to appear by Zoom, got him to see his doctor.
Okay, the second is the request for the temporary license and access agreement for the tower side. That's going to be a Joe and Philip thing to explain because I don't know what that is.
I kind of understand what it is. Is this something, is this a new one? Is this something new for your town?
It's just an extension of about free to intervene property to where, to allow access to build the new tower side.
And the property owners are on board?
Yes.
And that's the terms of the, the tower.
Tower.
I move we approve.
A second.
All those in favor? Bye. Okay, can you corrections? Yeah, that's just our community corrections grant award. I don't have enough traces on there. You just have to sign the documents, and it's a pretty big increase.
I remember, it's almost 90,000, like 89,000 and change.
Yeah, great.
What we got last year.
It's a big deal.
Like I mentioned before we started, Teresa's in the process of getting a change order. She should do approve.
Second, all those in favor? These are, okay, Matt Ford, I think, is on there. So these are just change orders, already created expenses, it's another little rail trail hazards, basically. I think, yes, I emailed, this is just our signature of the change order. Are you good proof?
Second.
All those in favor? Bye. And the next one, this is just a letter to the ABC saying that you're aware that they're going to serve alcohol to Spartan Race. Is that that?
Second.
All those in favor? Bye. And the last one is the GIS coordinator, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do that very end?
It doesn't matter.
Let's go ahead and do it.
Yeah. You want me to talk to them?
Of course.
We've hired a GIS coordinator to help with the 911 Center and development, Recreation Development Maps through Fayette County. We hired this lady, what was her name, Ruth?
Donna.
Donna. And I motioned to approve $42,000 per year for her salary.
Is it Donna or?
It's Donna.
Okay. We have so many Dinas in the valley still the same way.
Well, if it's Dina, she didn't grant me, and I asked her, she's like, yeah, it's Donna.
Okay, well, good to know. Okay, and that's awesome because she's a valley girl too. Well, from what I understand, Commissioner Luisas is very stoked about this candidate.
Absolutely.
And he would know, so I move we approve her. Hire.
A second.
All those in favor?
Start date as soon as possible?
Yeah.
I think she had a week, she had to do something.
Yeah, this week, so.
All right, cool. I'm done with you. Okay, onto the P S D updates. This is Tene Haven.
I prepared summer of all the party, some more than a couple that you don't.
Did not get a copy. I don't think. Okay, we, in the future, we need to get it fast, please. Have time to review them before the meeting. I don't want the Commissioner Brennan, just if you'll hand this to me. Just hand it to her for this box. Thank you. All right. Are you going to tell us what's in there?
Six months of water retention projects continuing right now. One of the first advances contract 18 with Paul, it's a customer. It is in the state department submitted to the Public Service Commission for approval of all the times along the time the Bureau of Public Health has approved the project. So six month waiting period you, oh, Service Commission. This is when we're doing the contract sooner and probably for next year. But behind it is contract 19, that's the next one.
When, when is the estimated completion day if it's bid out at the beginning of next year?
Middle of February. Okay, 19, it's 67 customers. It's three months behind. I hope to make this middle to Public Service Commission, pushing lock. So it's probably two months behind that one.
To completion or to bid?
Once in the whispering time, six customers, pretty long line, so the state has a provision called critical need application. Leslie has submitted that for the whispering time extension, and there's a special fund for that, so we shouldn't be needing to check that fund. Now, the Miami Commission, you voted to pay $40,000 for the preliminary engineering report for this extension. If the critical need application is approved, hopefully that money will not be needed. We might need that money. So we're not touching that money yet. Okay, if you want to, I can probably up a combined, say, hey, pick that one exactly. They'll win road extension, that's one you all, for 16 customers, turn down the life cycle, or end this month by technical and funding committee. So same to the white road extension, all 6,000, it's a big one there.
So on the old Gwen Road, what's the timeline for completion?
This is probably first of 2025. The white road extension, it's on track of the road, it's on also, I want to see for 60, I mean, on that, be the same day. Same track. Third, third one, on the same track and the same group there is a local road extension, beginning all under that, 30 customers, I found the PR, they're calling it, I'm also, you can either call, you all, you ask, what's bound with the, I mean, so it's custom, right? So just putting myself out, outlining.
Is this the one that's having the problem with the overflow?
New extension, the Commissioner Brennan matches, it's a 3000 customer, new extension from all aisles all the way down to some, could go down to little packs. So what's this, we've had issues with some of our other P S Ds with maintenance, maintenance
issues and upcues. How, how's our system look in that regard?
Why not?
Well, for New Haven, everything under New Haven.
New Haven has a public partnership with West Virginia American Water, so West Virginia American does all the operation within the system.
And the sewer, including the sewer?
And the sewer, the only sewer in New Haven district is about 60 customers in the water area.
Okay, and West Virginia American Water takes responsibility for that?
They do, they enter into an operation rate agreement with New Haven.
We're, lead pipe service line issues, all the older group, water, you can test it in, this year, so much that, that year, Mac, and so that year, four possible lead pipe service lines. West Virginia Water is, they have the game on it, they're all, all their system, the best they're not, so it's not an issue.
All right, thank you.
I got, I got one more.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. What would it, Leslie, just out of the ballpark here, what I'm getting ready to ask, but what would it cost to have engineered with these, say, we put a two inch conduit in for fiber? How, how could we do that and get it, get it to where we get a, engineer it, have a price for it, and maybe get a price for it? Whether we do or don't do it, what would something like that cost?
Are you talking about broadband?
Yeah, yeah.
Put it in the same trench?
Same trench.
Kelly, where?
I'm going to have to defer to David on the call because I know there will probably be some increased engineering fees related to doing that engineering, but I don't know on the cost of the actual, I don't know.
But I want, I want to try to make a point that any infrastructure, and I would, the Commission will talk about it, I just want to speak out on it. Any infrastructure, when it comes to digging ditches or anything, I would like to see if we couldn't put in some kind of engineering to run conduit for future for fiber. So it's done.
You said conduit.
The conduit, just a conduit, not fiber, just a conduit, but for fiber. And so it's there, and somehow it's GPS, and I think every, every hundred yards or hundred feet, there'd be an outlet come out, either around a pole or something. So if, if, to be used later on, it's done, there's no digging, it's already done.
Use your impulse and you, do a little bit of additional work on the drawings, but it's more simple, it's more, yeah, everything's there. The construction cost, Kelly Ratcliffe is on there, she's our expert on broadband, so she may want to add some to that, let her on.
No, no, I'm about to say that.
We would have to make sure that the funding agency didn't have, because the agencies that are involved in funding this project, we'd have to make it available.
Problem. Yeah, no, I understand. No, I understand, but anything in the future.
I know it totally want to know in writing why they would have a problem with this.
But anything in the future, I would like to see the Commission, if we could, say, you know, we want this added to it, just in case.
Well, and frankly, if you can reapproach us about any project that you haven't engineered yet, with that cost included, to do that, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, looking for the future.
That's a, that's a good idea, that's a good thing.
We've talked about it here several times, but.
Should we want to bring off, we don't look at, we can do this in the next two weeks and send it out something.
Yeah, send this out, and then we'll, and then we'll get it on the agenda, because if, if you're about to engineer something and we can, you know, if we decide we want to put money for it, so.
Okay, Kelly, what do you think? I think we could easily coordinate with our broadband team to get you some costs on this. We can't just throw costs out, but I do know that in some of the projects that we're working on, Bluefield, West Virginia is a good example, that's something that we've been doing. We've been working with a contractor, with the ISPs, because we're digging ditches, putting water lines, but we're also looking at power, fiber, and doing it all at once to cut down on costs, and it's working out well so far. But we'll have to coordinate to get you exact cost for that.
Yeah, I don't have.
No, I don't.
See, that's one of the things we talked to, to confirm about that.
Why did, well, we already talked about why did.
I think you did.
There's two other projects that wind up, Matt Peters is in charge of, he's got some information on that, he'll be here a little bit, let it go, so.
Oh, they're not on until nine.
Right.
I'm guessing we don't have the N E S here right now. Oh, we do. Excellent, you want to go? I'm going out of work, girl. Keep it cooking down here.
I'm only going to the N E S P S D. Right now, the only project that the P S D is looking at right now is maintenance water. The N E S has stretched out quite a bit in the last 12 years. We were down in Nodlem now, Russellville, we went up into Hilton Village, down almost into that ridge, and all the way to the Highland now. We stretched about 70 miles is what we got us maintain. The problem is that we have about nine miles at the heart of the system that is the original, and that is where our problems lie. So we have been working with E L Robinson, and actually yesterday, they brought us an estimate of the cost of what that is going to be, and we're looking at about $6.5 million. We are going to look, right now, we're just, it's at the very beginning stages, so we're going to start trying to find some funding. Our rates probably will have to go up again, we didn't take a rate increase last year. But right now, that is, we've got stretched as far as we can go, everybody else that has asked for water, it's like sporadic, you know, it's one or two miles for one or two people, which is just not feasible with health department standards either. But as of right now, that's the only thing that we're, we're really doing now.
What are the health department standards?
I'm trying to keep the quarry high up. When you go even that length, we have one person who wants water, but they're, they're right at a mile from where our line ends. And to go that far, you're looking at, especially about 60 or within a four inch line, turnover has to be about every three days to keep the quarry levels at where they need to be. So you're looking a mile wide, about 35,000 gallons of water. So they would have to have a turnover of 35,000 gallons of water a month.
Well, that's a lot for one.
That's, yeah. But other than that, I mean, financially, we are stable. No problems happen right now, but this is the only project right now.
So did you guys already pay for the engineering of this project, and now it's time to work on it?
We had actually kind of put this in with our last project, and so they're just now starting to look at it. We do have the map drawn out. Basically, right now, we just have the preliminary cost estimate. As of, we were going to try to replace all of the old section, but that was just way too much money. So this is just basically replacing the mains, which is the 10, the 8 and the 6 inch, and then connecting into what is already there.
Have they, have they looked at replacing the entire thing in those costs? Because there's a lot of infrastructure money coming from federal government right now.
It was about 7.7 million.
In addition to the six?
With that included, that, that was, it was like 7.7, then when they brought this back, it was 6.5. Because the way the system was put in so many years ago, it was through the woods, over the hills, around rocks, and so when we looked at just replacing the mains, there wasn't a whole lot of difference because then we had to travel so far from the main road to hook into the side roads. So that was about the amount of difference.
So it's about $1.2 million to do everything?
Yeah.
And have you been working with Region 4?
Not yet.
Okay. Right back there.
Yeah.
Hey, Leslie, can y'all work with them and get something together for us so we can see how we can help?
Nine mile section, is it, where exactly is?
If you go to the P S D, we are looking from the N E S P S D up into White Oak Road, which is always about off State Park. When we extended out to Corliss, they actually picked up White Oak and upgraded everything that way. And when they picked up Luke Road, and then several years ago, they went up around 31. So you're basically looking a half from the P S D to White Oak Road and then up to about Luke Road.
How many households is that? Just to ask.
You're probably looking at about 70 or 80 households.
Can we look at fiber with that too?
Yeah, I can ask an engineer to figure that in.
Yeah, I mean, just, they're trying to do it, yeah, well, yeah, just something to.
Yeah, because this is, this part of the section is, is our, is our trouble child. And unfortunately, where it is right at the heart of the system, if we have problems in this section, it knocks out a wide variety of people with, without water, because of where our holding tanks are, you know, held, this, this is our trouble child, and we're trying to get this.
You may have been listening when New Haven spoke, but they have these, a number of projects, and we've only had to put in, you know, a nominal amount of money to help them get it going.
Right.
And we have not given money to Dinesh, and I'm very open to hearing what you need so we can try to get some help to you up there.
We have, we have been very lucky in some of our projects, and I believe we have, had to come. The last project was actually 100% A and B funded. But unfortunately, where this is a maintenance, there's not a whole lot of funding out there. If you're picking up new customers, you can usually get funding really fast, or not, well, faster than.
So the engineering hasn't been paid for?
No.
Okay.
No, that, that is actually, this includes there being.
Just to study it?
Yes.
How much did they ask for to study it?
Actually, they, E L has not charged us anything when, and if this is approved and we get to go, then they will start charging us, and then that's where they put the salt cost in, with the total.
Okay, well, again, there's a lot of grant coming out there right now for infrastructure, and what isn't there is going to be there soon. And so we can, we send letters regularly stating what our priorities are, and we can put your projects, especially since you have hard data on it now, we can put it in there and start, you know, lobbying to get funding for it, and we can probably fund some of it ourselves. So keep us posted, see what Leslie can do for you first, and put something together, and then come back and let us know what the bottom line is that you need, and so we can try to get it for you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip back up the mountain.
Thank you.
All right, we have White Oak here yet?
We're here, sir.
Okay. Want to take a break then?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, let's, let's take a 15 minute break, and then hopefully White Oak will be here.
I'd like to, to just proceed to the, the lady, V S D, or audit, about your company.
She's our audit lady right there. Oh, yeah, no, no, you cannot.
I see it like.
He wants to see it.
You're like.
Let him see it, he's the dollar guy.
You're just too weak for this.
I'll get it later. I'm like, no. I'm the audit Nazi. Nothing for you, it's break time. Beating at 12 o'clock, White Oak? Over here? Come on down, please, let us know what's up. Go ahead.
Okay, I was supposed to, I guess, have some additional questions for us.
Well, we'd like to, we'd like to know what projects you have going on, and we'd like to know how your maintenance is, you have any maintenance that's pending or that needs to be addressed? Anything else?
The three, the three projects that this is probably workable, one is under construction right now, so that's pretty much spoken to the work, which, one way or another, is the if we, right?
What, what, what does it entail?
Sure. So that project was primarily to add a bridge to the solid process, to renovate all of the age of infrastructure in the plan, for the water protection. So add handrail, all of that, and that nature, did not do any work outside of the point. So that's what we're calling the phase one, solid and electric project. The two projects, the one that's within the four, the mission.
Passed on. That project is to remove the sanitary sewer bypass within the project plant. That bypass was installed in the nineties. Before then, it was an actual overflow that just went straight to double three. Now, permanent expansion, it was partially, probably not full three. So we can, we have recently started to true pass that. So as a result of the P S D negotiated with the, to, in good faith, to come under a consent decree to remove that bypass. So that's, that bypass is not there, consent order to remove, and this is based to project. To remove that bypass and increase capacity of the plant. Infiltration, uh, implosion filtration. As part of that project, we did look in other options, renovating the filtration system, they love the lead to the bypass, what feeds the water. Forty thousand dollars to do that. Also looking at function, implosion relation. That's, that's that project. The other project would be, project David said that we have. The new reverse on myself, the Carlisle, and the commission requested the P S D to. Part of maintenance, I think, the P S D probably did this better than that, but probably. I'm not aware of any major. Things that they're pushing right now. Part of that, this two project. P P requested that we prepare a sanitary sewer evaluation. And so they funded five hundred thousand dollars for that. That would all have. Looking for in the filtration system to reduce the implosion. But that's, that was exactly, that would not be included under construction for the project.
Don't want to call our keys tonight. Is it, that's new customers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, the, the engineering, is that, that? The forty thousand dollars was not for that, correct?
It's for the preliminary engineering port.
For the Carlisle Kings?
Carlisle Engine ten.
Okay. You know what I'm getting ready to ask?
What is it?
Fiber.
Okay, yeah. Something over there, actually. Uh, I'll ask you, you think it's safe to put in sewer lines, well, I mean, I know, twenty drink water is not a problem. Oh, it's more like sewer line or broken, and it gives you.
I mean, if it's in conduit. If it's in conduit, if engineered in conduit, I don't know what it's forty gauge, I can't remember what all, all that crap.
Sure.
But I mean, uh, I mean, you said it wouldn't cost much to engineer it.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, if we figure out that we gotta have to have thicker or a different conduit. I mean, I just like to have engineered for future fiber, if you're digging, if you're digging.
Okay, I might, I might enough to close that in, but we'll send you that.
Okay. Okay.
All right, sounds good. Anything to add?
I'm aware of this, I'm assuming, sorry, I was talking to the meeting.
I mean, you can raise it with us. I have to remind us of which one, because.
One of those three hundred and eighty and two hundred and fifty and two different figures.
Sure.
No, we're trying to get updates, because we, we realize that some of our P S Ds are struggling, and, and, you know, the ones at the last meeting have all been proposed by the Public Service Commission to be taken over by West Virginia American Water. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're aware of problems within the other P S Ds, so we can head them off, off of them.
I think that I remember also the earlier request about the.
Does anybody have anything to add? Who's here? We'll be sure to keep us surprised if anything is going on, so we don't get to where we are with Dolly River. With the prison losing water and then the state getting involved. Want to try to make sure that we, we have choices when we have choices about what to do. All right, thank you. And Ruth. We need to address the salary of the new hire, right? Did we? Did you? Okay, okay, I just didn't, I missed it, okay. That's dismissed. Yeah, um, is that it? Ocean and Jern? All right, we're good. I know it.